Okay.
You're not muted. Do you want to be muted?
No.
Okay.
There I am. Thanks.
Okay, what was just going on with it?
Six thirty.
Okay.
New selling stuff.
Okay.
Hi, Ralph.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you today?
Pretty good. How are you doing? You're down in Mexico still?
Yes, yes, I'll be here until May. Yeah, it's going well. Well, that's just warm weather, thankfully.
Yeah, well, it's um, it sounds like a very nice place to be until it warms up up to here.
Yeah, yeah, because as we know, summers are just beautiful in Colorado.
They are, and and even a little bit of spring, but we seem to go winter, summer.
Right? I hear you've been getting some cold weather.
You know, we did. We had that Arctic jet stream sort of come down and we had really cold and some snow and then it went east. So we're okay. Now there's no snow.
Okay.
It was cold, though. It was always interesting when you have a little tiny dachshunds when they think it's cold to go outside.
Oh, it's sweater weather for them, huh?
Yeah, they they're just not into anything that seems under fifty.
Oh, I know what you mean. I I have a pity mix and she is very sensitive to cold or hot. So it's like she just has to have perfect weather. Yeah.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, we all want that, don't we?
We all want to, but we're.
Right.
You may not have a choice.
Right.
Now, did you always go down there? Is that a place that you've gone down for a while?
Yes, I um, I had a summer home in Scottsdale, Arizona for eight years. And it's such an easy trip down from Phoenix area. It's only like a four hour drive down here. So I would come here frequently just to um, you know, visit for long weekend or, you know, just to get some beach time and then when I sold my house in um, in Scottsdale, I didn't, I really wanted another winter home that was in warmer weather. So I decided to try this out. And this is my second year and it's working out really well.
Well, it sounds just really super for you.
Ah, it's working out great. And you know, I'm getting more connected to the community now, but this being my second year, which makes it really nice.
Yeah, that you're actually returning. Not stopping by.
Yeah, right.
Well, that sounds wonderful and
oh, I think.
You're involved in traffic and mobility up in Colorado. So that's fun, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I bet we're getting ready to start, I would think.
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple minutes after five.
Yeah, I always check my calendars. I would think I missed something.
Joy or Pam, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. We, this Cory, we are gonna give it another minute or two. See if everyone shows up. Hey, it's five oh three. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Manitou Springs Mobility and Parking Board. And we'll start off with the roll call. Uh, Luke.
Hello, Luke Prince here.
And Carl.
Present.
And Joy.
I'm present.
Pamela.
Here.
And Ralph.
Here.
Great. And we're missing Bill Kerner. I don't see Bill here or online. Bill, are you around? No. Okay, so and we've got Roy and Juan here and we've got Natalie. Um, and we've got a member of the public also. So we'll have public comment in a few minutes if um, if that's of interest. Oh, and I'm Corey Satella. I'm the chair. So welcome, everybody. Just a quick reminder. This is a place for everyone to um, to feel safe in sharing their suggestions and ideas and all ideas are welcome. And we really welcome respectful debate and you don't have to agree with everyone. And um, we're just really glad to hear everyone's perspectives on things. So thank you for making time to attend this meeting. Um, so first up will be the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Carl.
I would like to suggest that we slightly amend the agenda to add the city council liaison update.
I like that. And I think maybe we'll we'll add the city council update after public comment and before we get into the presentations. If that's all right.
And I'd move to approve said updated agenda.
Thank you, Carl.
Appropriate.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Any objections to moving ahead with that revised agenda or any other suggestions on the agenda? Hearing no objections, we'll pass that unanimously. Um, next up is approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments or uh, corrections to the minutes? If not, I would love to get a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Ralph.
Second.
And Carl. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? So that passes unanimously also. Um, so here we are, ready for public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? Now, now would be a great time. Right up here, please. If you can state your name for the record and um, generally try to stick to about three minutes for public comment.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Andy Nicholas. I'm a resident. I live at one twenty one Ruxton, also known as the Twin Spring Building. Uh, I was invited here by Juan, uh, because we spoke earlier in the month to chat about the RPP program on Ruxton. A couple of suggestions that I had brought up at the time was to potentially break the RPP zone into two. Uh, lower Ruxton, I will say in our experience, those of us that lived really closer to Osage in the Loop, uh, especially in high visitor season, uh, half of the licensed place that area are from Texas and there are visitors who are just kind of rolling the dice. And I don't think they're necessarily as afraid of getting ticketed because they think, you know, if I do, it's fine. I've stayed here all day and uh, had a wonderful time with my family here in Colorado. So I think thinking about what the disincentives could be to prevent that would be great, but that's something the city's dealt with for a long time. I think other ways of looking at how to make the RPP zone better without focusing on enforcement is probably better. One of the other reasons that uh, some of the residents and I have trouble is that we had a wonderful parking lot that was full-time residential parking lot at one twenty Ruxton. It was owned by the family that owned uh, the um, cottages across the street, but that family recently sold all those cottages and the parking lot. The new owners have now made the parking lot um, paid parking during the day. They have some spaces in the back. They're very generously offering to some of their residents at the cottages. But the lot is now effectively majority uh, paid parking. So although those were not RPP spaces, those thirteen spots in that parking lot, they were still full-time residential. And so we've lost uh, those spaces and now the residents in those cottages, very understandably, are applying applying for RPP to park on the street. Whereas previously residents in those same cottages used to have their own lot. So it's actually added more cars to an already difficult area. And just to add some specifics, there are eleven full-time RPP spaces between Osage and Maple Lane. There are, I will now list some residents here. So the address is at one fifteen Ruxton, one seventeen Ruxton, one twenty one Ruxton and one twenty five Ruxton. All of those collection of units, which are cottages or apartments, have zero off-street parking. Now, there are many other buildings and homes that do have off-street parking, but of course, everyone in that stretch is allowed to apply for RPP. And at the moment, um, mobility and parking aren't asking questions like, do you already have off-street parking? Do you already have parking spaces in your building that are provided? And I think maybe considering prioritizing RPP passes for folks who firstly don't have any uh, off-street parking would be also something to consider. Um, you know, that doesn't mean that folks that have off-street parking shouldn't have guest passes available or something perhaps. But that's something it would be great for you guys to consider as you review the RPP handbook, which is what Juan was telling me you guys are working on now. Uh, I have a gift for you also. Um, there are two part-time RPP spaces in front of one twenty one Ruxton, which Roy is very nice to split those for us a couple of years ago because there was zero paid parking available on that block. And there's two businesses in one twenty one Ruxton on the ground level. I don't know if you've seen them before the uh, e-bike. And yeah, so uh, we requested that that was split a couple of years ago to pay parking during the day and RPP at night. But now we have that parking lot across the street that's paid parking. So I don't know, silver lining, folks. Uh, so I actually, uh, some residents and I are welcome to give you back that part, those two part-time spaces and make them full-time RPP again. You know, small, small successes. Uh, we can take those back. Um, now that's just what I have to say about RPP. There's a couple of other things. So I don't know if that's my three minutes on that or was that twelve minutes? I have no concept of time, right?
If you could, uh, yeah, you're over three. If you could kind of wrap your comments up, that would be appreciated.
Okay, I need to talk about the EV charging as well. And that's um, so I don't know if this is something you'd prefer me to just send by email to save time today. I'm happy to do that. What do you think?
I think we don't have a huge list of people waiting to talk. And so if you, if you'd like to make some concise comments about EV charging, uh, please go ahead. We'll give you another couple of minutes.
Um, we are so lucky, I think, as a city to have gotten the grant to get these new chargers that we have. Um, obviously, the the grant that was given to us was because uh, some major automark automakers were not being truthful about the amount of carbon emissions that their vehicles were putting into the atmosphere. So they settled and made a bunch of money available for cities like ours to install chargers as a way to meet the goal of decarbonizing. I am encouraging the city in this board to keep that in mind. I have an EV and I live in a home without off-street parking and I also use RPP parking. And the major difference in day-to-day use of an EV is the amount of time it takes to fill up. Uh, with a gas car, you can spend five minutes at a gas station. You could have four hundred miles of range, five minutes. With an EV, it just is not possible. But luckily, the city has installed these new chargers and the one supercharger we have is delightful. Uh, I will say as an EV owner, I very much, and many others I know here in town, took advantage of the free parking that was available at the rec center. And also, we're very lucky. The MAC Center has free charging too, which is very nice of them to do. But as far as the city provided free charging, we used it a lot. Unfortunately, that went away when ChargePoint replaced all of those chargers. So now that's all paid charging. Our request is to go back to offering residents free charging. In the past, the free chargers at the rec center were available to literally anyone who had an EV to come in and charge for free. I think it's more reasonable now that just Manitou residents could be offered free charging. And if that feels like too many cars to do for free charging, you could even say just residents who don't have off-street parking, much like myself, where we can't necessarily install our own chargers on site, although some of us are trying to figure that out too. But that would be the request is reinstate free charging and not just on the level one chargers, but also the supercharger. Uh, our request would be to try that for twelve months, see what kind of expense it actually is, because I don't think it'll be very much. Um, and hopefully it'll be a successful trial for twelve months, offering free charging to residents. There you go.
Thank you very much, Andy.
All right. And I'm happy to follow up by email if that's, if anyone needs to, no problem.
I actually would appreciate that if you wouldn't mind. And so um, have you, do you guys have?
I've got, I'm LinkedIn with someone. So I'll send one. You guys can forward them around. And also, just in public comment, it'd be a good time. I really appreciate Juan taking the time. We talked a couple of different times to make time in your day to talk to me. It was nice. I really appreciate that. No problem. Thank you, sir.
That's great to hear. Okay. Uh, lots to think about there. We are going to talk a little bit more about the RPP later in this meeting. Um, EV charging one is an interesting one. So we will um, we'll get that email and we'll uh, we'll consider whether that's something that uh, ought to be part of a discussion of a future meeting. With that, I would like to move on to city council updates. If that's all right, here's our council liaison, Natalie Johnson.
Hello, everyone. Um, okay, so I think first thing, um, in advance of tonight's meeting, um, Cory asked me to um, give an update on the Metro Board. And um, of course, as we know, city lawyers are working with their lawyers. So it's actually not anything I can give an update on. So that's like the least exciting update um, possible. But um, but that's my update. Um, I don't know if Ralph probably maybe has a little more freedom to share something additional, but um, but I cannot. Um, the one thing I did want to share though, um, we had our city council retreat on Saturday. And um, two of the things that sort of came out of the meeting um, that were sort of the most important sort of issues um, that we wanted to tackle were mobility and economic development. And uh, I think that additionally, then we brought up the role of MAP, uh, the MAPS Board and um, council was discussed, it was a casual conversation. So no decisions were made, but we discussed um, how best to work with you all on your um, and your skills um, as we move forward. And some things were um, almost making it more of a task force. Um, giving specific requests for specific items to be tackled, what that would look like. Um, how often you would need need to meet to meet those goals and requests. And so uh, just so you know, we're continuing to have those conversations. Um, we are continuing to find value in your group and your work. Um, but just knowing that um, if if city council is going to be working actively on that, if we're going to be working really closely with Roy and Juan to achieve those goals, at what point um, does does the MAPS Board participate in all of that? And so I don't, I don't have an answer, but I want to know that it was, it was discussed. And um, and again, it just emerged yet again how important mobility is to this particular council. And that's all I have. So if you have any questions. And that's all I have. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie?
I will have questions when it comes to um, the dissolution of the Metropolitan District. So when that comes up later for discussion, are you going to be around for the whole meeting?
I will, but I won't be able to really participate because again, because it's, it's become a legal matter between attorneys. At that point, we can't.
Sure. It's more so like clarification. And so maybe I'm, I'm, I'm hoping uh, one of you two could answer those along the way. So yeah, hopefully.
I know, it's such a tricky thing, right?
I mean, I could ask him now, but that would kind of throw off everything. So uh, I'll, I'll hope that the two of them can answer it. Thank you.
And, and thank you for looking at our role and how we can best benefit the city and and do things that are of value to the city also. Appreciate you looking at that. We've been aboard for a while. I've been on it a long time. And we've really changed from before we had uh parking and before we had a lot of issues. So I appreciate you looking and, and discussing our role and how we can add value to the city. Thank you.
We're getting there. We really are. It feels slow, but I think we're.
Well, it's always slow in government.
I guess I've got a kind of a question. So we, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. So um, Carl and I had a meeting with you and the mayor. And the agreement that we came to was that we would set up a combined MAP and council discussion. Um, I, from my perspective as the chair of the board, I would appreciate it if we could be, if we could engage with council with some of that too. I'm, I do think that there are some things that the MAP Board does and could do that maybe council isn't really considering. And so um, a more thorough discussion that would involve a lot of us would, would be appreciated. And I think, uh, Carl, did you get any response from the mayor on the timing of that?
I don't think we, we responded. Did we? Did he respond? I was just gonna say, I, we didn't, yeah. Cause we discussed that we didn't have an answer to your, your question. And, and I don't know, Roy, do you, I mean, I don't feel like, I think council would certainly be amenable to that, but we never, I don't think that actually we got to that point.
Yeah, I think, I think that is planned in the future. That's what I've heard.
Right.
So we're just waiting for those moments. We have a opening in the uh, the council agenda, which is pretty packed for a little bit here.
But, but I do feel like it was a positive, right?
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that, Natalie. Um, now we will move into presentations. And so the way we've got this structured is we're going to start with presentations from the board. And then we'll have presentations from staff and potentially other presentations. I don't think we have other presentations. So starting with the MAP presentations, one thing we wanted to do was just do a quick review of the goals that we had agreed on and were approved from last year. And so if you look in your packet, I'm looking on page eight right now, the four goals, and there it is up on the screen. Um, so goal one, gosh, we didn't talk about this in our agenda review. Um, goal one is to develop the scope for the uh, a mobility master plan. Um, to work to uh, with, the objective is that we're going to try to get us the scope. And then we can set an RFP to have a consultant that would help us to develop that plan. Is there any update uh, from staff side on that? Or should we be um, pulling together a uh, like a subcommittee to try to set scope for that? Or what would your recommendation be for how we could move forward on that goal?
Um, great question. Uh, I think where, there was still some discussion if it's going to be mostly bikeability, I thought, on this, because we were still talking about that. Did we make a decision? Was this a total mo- mobility type look at the whole scene, or did we decide it was to be more bikeability? And I don't know if we ever got through that part.
I think we, I think what we aligned on was bike and ped plus sidewalk considerations. Because um, so much of our, of the potential bike infrastructure is impacted by um, sidewalk discussions. And frankly, the availability of funding for some sidewalk improvements. And I think we agreed that um, this is, the idea is it's a mobility plan, but it's not going to have a major focus on transit. It's more bike, ped and sidewalks. That's my recollection.
Yeah, the term would be the micro mobility, so it would exclude buses mostly.
Okay, so we, and Juan, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we got the uh, money in the budget this year for um, to do the master plan. Right?
We do.
Fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
All right, so probably what, if we want, if you want us to move forward now on this, we will um, need to come up to get uh, put out an RFP for some, some bids for someone to do this for us, right? And that's the idea. So if there is a, uh, we can come up with one and bring it next month to you. To go out to bid and see if everyone agrees with the scope. And then, and then put it out to bid after that. So I would say we would need still one month to get that together.
Would the RFP mostly be the scope that we would present to the?
Biggest thing is how, what we're looking for. So we really need your help on what that scope would be for this master plan. So that's going to be critical. The rest is all legal stuff and we'll take care of that.
Yeah.
It's going to be the scope of what we're asking these folks to do for us and what we need. So that's where we need your help.
Um, w- would it be reasonable to s- um, send a draft of an, of an RFP in advance of next month's meeting, so that during the meeting, we could sort of talk through it and have it on the agenda?
You bet. Anytime we can put something up there to kind of use and walk through, I think that'd be excellent.
Okay, so could we set a target for you guys to, to send out a draft of that, say like a week before the, the next meeting? Is that, so that'd be within three weeks?
So you, you want us to come up with the scope and send out kind of a draft scope? Uh, cause the, the rest of the contracts is legal stuff. That's through our, uh, we already have that in play. It's just really coming up. What do we want from the master plan? And that's always the tricky part.
I, Cory, I think we could figure that, that part out, looking at other cities and what their uh, micro mobility, bikeability, master plans look like. That would give us a sense of what the scope would be. We could just chop, add, you know, get our rough draft put together and then turn it over to uh, to staff. And then they can really add the legal, legal and make it something that they can.
If you want to send us from, from your perspective, the experts in the bike world and all that, micro, you know, send us that information, then we can uh, review it as well from the city perspective, see if we think there's anything missing or have any questions. And then we can bring it back next month as a group and go over it or something. Does that sound okay?
I think that's great. And Luke, it would, would it be possible? Are you willing to sort of take the lead as, as the board rep on this to start pulling that together? And what I'm imagining is maybe you could do a little bit of research, then uh, have Juan send it out to the whole board and say, okay, this is where we're at. And it's time for people to, you know, chime in their ideas in advance of the meeting. So we've got something reasonable to talk about at the next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, if that works for you guys, then that's the way we'll handle it.
Perfect. Um, if i- i- is there a timeline, Luke? You think you can get us that information so we can work it in our plans?
Uh, just as soon as I can. I mean, what, uh, what do you guys think would be reasonable? I mean, I understand the urgency of it.
How, how about um, would it, would, would the second week of March be too soon?
Uh, two weeks, I think I could pull something together.
If we, cause we can go back and forth, then we need time then to finalize it in a sense, go through it.
Yeah, but have the initial.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Great. All right, so we're able to move forward on that one. Keep going here. By the way, it looks like maybe Rolf has dropped off. Um, but we still got our form and everything, so we'll keep moving.
No, I'm still here.
Oh, it's funny. I don't see you up on the screen. Oh, there you are now. Gotcha.
Sorry. Hi.
Great. So, sorry, Rolf, I just uh, thought you'd, you'd left. I couldn't see you. So glad you're still there. Um, okay, second goal is collaboration with the Chamber, Pac-Man and other stakeholders to host a citywide biker walk to school day to promote walking and biking. Um, I am aware that Pac-Man has been asking some questions about that and um, some questions of staff. But I'm assuming that uh, staff hasn't taken any action on that, right?
Not at all.
Still something that staff is uh, supportive of in concept?
I believe, I believe last year we, we, I don't know what we did, but I think we might have helped with maybe even blocking a couple of areas, cones or something. So we're here to support this if they want to do it again this year. I thought it went well last year too, is what I heard.
Is, so I've got a question on that. Would that be just um, piggybacking on the existing National Bike to School Day and existing at least statewide Bike to Work Days? Or would we want to create our own? Because each of those are separate events. And I can uh, make a case for doing any and all of them. But I would advise that we piggyback off of already existing um, marketing material and, and push behind nationally recognized Bike to Work and Bike to School Days.
I agree with that, Luke. I think we want to, w- when we talked about it before, I had always envisioned we would uh, piggyback on some of the existing efforts. Um, now, do we know what that date is? It is in June. Ca- Carl, did you have a comment?
I was just going to throw in that for the, the bike and just as important, the walk to school. Uh, Evan Johnson has been kind of the spearhead of a lot of activities at the middle school. And so trying to partner with him, I think would be extremely beneficial. And A, and I don't know the dates.
So the uh, National Bike to Work Day is Friday, May sixteenth. Now, the week prior, so the twelfth through the eighteenth is Bike to Work Week. So we could pick any days within that, makes sense, but the day itself is Friday, May sixteenth.
But as you alluded to before, Luke, Colorado does not follow the national schedule because of the weather. So it's usually June and late June.
Cory, yeah, good point.
Cut, ask a question, you know, um, if it's in June, it's kind of a Bike to Work Day. I, I think the schools are out. So, we, I believe, you know, yeah, so they, I thought last year they did it in May. Uh, maybe it was towards the middle or end of May, so that they still had nice enough weather. But that is something to consider if we're looking at the school side of it as well.
Yeah.
So it looks like we have the three dates. There's schools, national and state. Um, do we want to get behind one, two or three of those?
So I know uh, for my understanding, Pac-Man is that they're going to support the bike and walk to school. You know, and Evan Johnson, no matter what. So if the city and Chamber or whoever else wants to pa- partner on that, we, I think they would probably appreciate the help. Uh, and obviously, I'll be participating in the statewide Bike to Work Day in June. Um, and again, so if the city Chamber wants to try and more actively promote that within Manitou Springs, I think that would be a good thing. I, you know, in the past, we've, I recall Pac-Man had a a kind of a competition where, you know, hey, post your picture uh, riding to work on Instagram. And we gave out gift tip, gift certificates and, and gave that kind of stuff away, trying to incent people. So, you know, again, trying to partner with other organizations to get more participation would be great.
Yeah, I'm not immediately seeing uh, the dates for the Colorado one.
Colorado one is um, Wednesday, June twenty-fifth.
Um, maybe what we should do on this one is invite or, or give a request to Pac-Man and see if they might, you know, um, provide us with some direction of the way, of the best ways that the city could be part of it and be supportive of it.
I think trying to build on the earlier email thread would probably be effective. And oh, yeah, and or we can ask folks to show up and speak.
Okay. With, with that too, um, collaborative efforts is a, is a goal here. I think that working with the Chamber of Commerce would really, I mean, I, I hate to advocate for a group that, you know, isn't represented here tonight. But that seems to be up their alley, is to have the businesses kind of lead in there, big into events. Uh, again, I don't want to speak for them or make an assumption that they'll do anything. Um, but it, it would play well that we partner with them for Bike to Work Day.
Okay, that sounds good. I, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it as a task for me to make sure I follow up with Pac-Man Group and also Evan, so that we can um, we can get a strategy to find what's the best way that MAP can be supportive and what kind of things might we ask from the city, including talking with the Chamber. All right. Our third goal is trying to get a regular cadence of providing input for Mountain Metro. Um, and so we weren't able to do that last year. Um, Juan, I think you were going to try to find out for us when the deadlines were and when the right time for us to, to get involved with those discussions could be.
So, yeah, once we make a decision on, when, once we get close to the date, uh, uh, we, I have talked to him already about maybe, maybe me- meeting thirty days before, um, before they, we go to council to make any kind of decision. So that if we have any input, uh, we can discuss that internally.
Okay, and I think, if I remember right, I think Luke, you might have mentioned this at the last meeting. Um, m- maybe we ought to have an agenda item where we talk about, you know, regardless of the timing, if we wanted to make some recommendations, you know, are we ready to do that? Um, do, do we want to put that on the agenda for an upcoming meeting, uh, some dedicated time to talk through uh, our suggestions for Mountain Metro?
My suggestion for that would be yes. And that way, whenever that time comes, um, we have it just kind of on hand in the agenda, in the meaning, meeting minutes from whenever our, that would have, will be.
That works.
But yeah, uh, that, that's exactly right. That way we can just have that in the back pocket of ours.
Okay, so for the March meeting of this group, we will put an agenda item, uh, specifically talking about goal number three. Um, to, to try to collect, uh, collect feedback and see if we can uh, agree on some recommendations. So that we'll have them ready when the time is right.
And, and just to let you know, um, so normally, or uh, uh, sometimes it's late fall, we bring it to council. So the, the goal in, in our discussions, Juan and I, with Mountain Metro is that um, we will bring it, or they will come here probably in August is what we were thinking, maybe even July. So that's when they'll present. So we'll let you know when that, they can do it. And I think it's a great idea. You guys would be prepared for your suggestions ahead of that time. So that's a good idea. Thank you.
Great. Um, okay, and uh, we're just getting back to our goals here. So goal four is to update the RPP document. And we are gonna talk about that a little bit later. Uh, yep, it's part of our staff update. So we, that, that one is actively moving forward. And so we'll talk a little bit about that when we get to it on today's agenda. Any questions or comments before we move on from the goals review? Think it's a good thing for us to review these at least periodically. I think, you know, we, we have them in the packet every month, at least our goals, so that they're always at hand.
So I have a, a, a comment on that. Maybe at the beginning of each meeting, um, instead of the pledge of allegiance, we can say our vision statement for the Mobility and Parking Board, which shall develop, review and make recommendations to city council on multimodal mobility and parking management with the goal of making Manitou Springs a mobile, safe and convenient place for residents, businesses and visitors. We can always keep those along with the goals top of mind for each, um, for each one of our meetings. That'd be great.
Luke, did you just remember that off the top of your head?
Of course I did.
Um, yeah, I like that idea. And actually, what I'm wondering right now is if we could have that, maybe we could have that vision statement um, added to every agenda. Any objections from staff if we were to, to have that on the agenda document?
I'll have, no.
Okay, I think we'll plan to do that. Thanks for that suggestion. Okay. Um, so that is our goal review, and I don't think we've got any other presentations from the board side. So with that, we'll move into our staff presentations. And am I right? Is James watching somewhere and is uh, advancing these slides for us?
He's remotely uh, monitoring.
Great, great job, James.
Yes, he's doing a good job.
All right.
Yeah, so um, I, I didn't have the number. I was able to get the reports from uh, Tara from Pike Wright for uh, we didn't have the numbers from November and December. I was able to retrieve that information from her. And uh, so I plugged all the numbers in. And uh, so I plugged all the numbers in and um anywhere you see NA, NA is because I was fairly new. Uh so there was no data collected. Next slide. So uh what I did here is I, from twenty-three and twenty-four, I did add uh January of uh twenty twenty-five. And it's, it's a lot higher than twenty-three, uh but January, so January and February are are fairly slower months. And then on the next slide, with, there's a breakdown of where we have the the total start and ends uh per location where we have them right now. That's everywhere that we have a Pike Wright hub.
And if I'm right, we don't have the new one at the library on here yet, do we?
No, we, we just installed that uh recently, so it will not show up until next month.
Okay.
Alright, uh next slide.
I think we got Mountain Metro would be next.
Before we advance past Pike Ride, uh was that, was that all for Pike Ride?
This was all Pike Wright.
Okay, I've got a question about that. Did you ever find out if um it's possible to have um uh free Pike rides within Manitou Springs city limits?
Yes, I actually did email Tara that information from uh our last meeting and she, I can forward it to everyone, uh cause she did respond to that. So I could do that to the, to the entire group. She did respond.
Can you give us a highlight? Or do you remember what she said? Or do you want, would you rather just send?
No, it was ju, it was just very brief. Uh the, some of the things that she mentioned is that um, there were some things that she could input, you know, and work with us like for the, putting it on the, placing it on the pay stations for uh possible discounts. And also working with our PIO to also put information out there for Pike Wright uh through our city website.
Great, cool. Thank you.
We'll watch for that.
James, do you want to go over the ridership from Mountain Metro and uh C Click Fix?
You guys hear me okay?
Yep, we got you.
Yes, sir.
Oh boy, okay. There, within just a moment. Okay. Um, there we go. So this is, um I did put in here the, the end of twenty twenty-four um cause I didn't have it for the last meeting. Um uh so this has uh November and December um ridership data um as well as the the ongoing kind of trends. And then I did put together the twenty-four, twenty-five comparison. Of course, all we have is January data on there for right now. Um I do need to, to fiddle with some of the the formatting. Unfortunately, it didn't fit all on one page for us here. But the the charting aspect won't be particularly useful till we get a little bit more data here, but. I did also add in the the raw data as well. I don't know if that's valuable at all for for the board, but I did include it just because I'm sure.
The only thing I noticed on here, just, I'm just curious about the Route thirty-three on January, in January twenty-four uh was lower than in twenty-five. I thought January this year has been pretty cold and snowy, so it kind of surprises me thirty-three. But it may be last January it was cold, too. I don't know, but it's a pretty good increase in in incline slash maybe cogs.
And I would say that we've, though we've had more snowstorms, I would say we've had a lot more warmer days as of late as well. Um, I know for a while there we were seeing weather basically in the fifties there for a bit. So I'm sure that's had an impact and it did seem to be uncharacteristically busy in Manitou during that time.
Out of curiosity, is there any tracking of which days thirty-three doesn't go to the top of Ruxton because of snow? Do we track that or just assume that's the case because of low ridership?
I believe uh Mountain Metro notes anytime they have service disruptions. Um, yeah, so if you, if you look at the raw data, um like I said, I'm gonna play with some formatting because it doesn't look like it really shows up, but uh it looks like it kind of jumps to a second page, but they do note the days where there was delayed starts and uh service disruptions and for how long, what times.
Cool. Thank you.
So just two comments uh that I, and I, thanks to James for putting the the data and the, and the charts in there. One thing that for whatever reason jumped out at me in reviewing this, this month is and a lot of the conversations around Manitou Transit, you know, most people are fairly supportive of the thirty-three shuttle up to the cog and the incline. Um but the three, you know, there's maybe a bit more grumbling. When you look at the yearly totals of ridership, they're not that far off, right? Two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Um, you know, obviously the thirty-three has much higher summer peaks and lower tails. But, you know, we're still on the Route three, we're moving a lot of bodies, right? And that's a lot of car trips saved. And, you know, I just throw it out there, you know, just like, oh, I should really be trying to support Route three more or because it's much closer in comparison to thirty-three. Um and so I just thought that was really interesting. Um that the numbers were closer than I was expecting, so.
So good point on three, three, and I I should stay, and it's not, we don't have everything clear yet on this, but Mountain Metro um looks like they're gonna be starting a program possibly this year of three being uh subsidized from Colorado Springs. Um and we may be able to tap into that, too, so that, that that bus could be free as well, um which would be pretty huge. So that's all being worked on, but once we hear of more information on how that might work and um, you know, we'll let you know.
James, I've got a question. Would it be uh feasible to add a, so right now what we're looking at is essentially twenty twenty-four data without much in twenty twenty-five. Could we add another year, like twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four? As we, you know, next month, as we continue to to fill out twenty twenty-five, is that something that you could add to the chart?
Yeah, that that'd be too easy, and I I think that would add a lot more value to to this page as a whole, as opposed to having them, having it separated, but uh so that would be super easy to do.
Okay, and now, and then this might be trickier, but I think if you were to scroll down, you'll see the three charts, the tails of the three charts are, have gotten uh moved over to the next page.
Yes, I'm, I, I, I should have looked at the packet. I hadn't. Um and uh, so I before it, it, it showed up how I anticipated and I kind of used kind of the the same uh structure. I just changed kind of some data, so I assumed it would display similar. So uh that's something I'm gonna have to play with is just the the formatting so that it does show up on one page. Um, cause I'm not real sure why it it fit the page just fine on this one.
That looks good there.
And then going to this one, it just kind of, it's completely off, so I'll have to play with that more. Um, I, I just hadn't looked at the, to packet before. Um, so I, I'll, I'll get that fixed.
I'll just say we recognize the uh intense amount of work that's been going on the, in the department at the start of this year, so uh 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 understand and and no harm done, and thanks for being willing to take a look at it for future. Um, any other questions or comments about the Mountain Metro data? If not, we will move on. I think up next is C Click Fix Reports.
Uh so that one is gonna be real easy. Um, no, no report for the month of January. Um, as we did not have any requests, were work orders uh created in the month of January. Um, there was also nothing closed out in the month of January. The only open task that we have currently um is a sidewalk uh complaint for some raised sidewalk down by the Dillon, which I'm presuming will be corrected during all of the, the work that's gonna be going on over there.
Okay. Um, so next on our agenda then is infrastructure updates. Are there any infrastructure, mobility and parking related infrastructure that staff has updates on?
Um, yeah, nothing, nothing major at this point, you know, uh what's been presented to council. Of course, we're looking at the Ruxton Corridor. Um, but that's uh moving slowly. Um, we continue to look at the Creek Walk Trail and waiting for uh um CDOT to give us clearances for the historical side of that is, is where we're facing some challenges. Um, that wasn't submitted initially by CDOT, so it is now and waiting for that. And then we'll continue on the Creek Walk um completion, starting uh the section number four. So that's the uh Chamber to the Chase Bank area. Yes, sir.
Did you have a chance? Um, I saw in the minutes from last month, um on the Creek Walk Phase Six, uh we were gonna look, talk to the city engineer, traffic engineer about the road diet and the Rainbow Falls walkup.
Yes, no, that has not been all completed yet, but that still will be part of that whole discussion once we get there. That thing's pretty uh early in the process. Um, but the plan is to uh still look into uh those suggestions of street diet and and other things we can do in that area to make it better. It is a very limited corridor, but that kind of supports the street diets. Uh I think one of you mentioned that last time it does. So it's actually a, a good idea that we proceed that way, so. Um, and and then, of course, the the section five is, hasn't even really been discussed, but that's possibly, you know, through Memorial Park or or on the sidewalk, but that's still way, uh we don't have the funding for that, but we are trying to look for funding. So we're getting some assistance with that as well. Um, and then um, I think everyone knows that we, uh we got the uh, from the pool to the loaf and jug was completed. Uh, we still have some signage to put up, though, to direct people to Creek Walk Trail if they want to get off of Manitou Avenue and and go across the bridge. And then it does look like this spring or early summer, we gotta probably do, try to do a little bit of improvement on the uh the base there coming off um from the road because there's some uh dirt and potholes and not great for biking through, I don't think. So um unless you have a mountain bike, you may love that, but uh, but uh we'll look at that to see if we can't make that transition a little better. Um. I think the Dillon is uh, we're moving along the best we can on the Dillon, so we're still in the conceptual phase uh on some of the uh thoughts of what needs to happen there. I I did go to the URA and we are seeing if they want to assist us in funding the Ped Bridge or Mobility Bridge from Dillon to Fields. So we're, we're hoping maybe they can help us with that funding because they were gonna do a uh Ped Bridge in the URA area anyway. So maybe we can just join in the one section. Um, I'll be meeting with uh one of them soon to to show what the conceptual design is and see if they are are able to do that. Um, and then, of course, there's just a lot of little things happening around the city, filling potholes and uh trying to take care of that. And then the snow plowing, it seems like a lot this year, so a lot of ice and a lot of cold, so. If there are any questions or any, anything you've seen out there that you want to ask me, I'll be happy to.
Roy, I did have a question. You mentioned that uh the Ruxton, the uh Ruxton project was discussed at council. For those of us that didn't attend the council meeting, can you give a sort of overview of the timing and and where things are at? It's always a question that gets asked.
Yeah, well, um it was basically uh went to council with uh three options um on where they would want us to start at and and work towards, because that's still all being discussed because of the challenges of the corridor itself. Uh, there's no easy way to do any of this up Ruxton, so um at this point, we're gonna, we need to come back with more details. So it really didn't go too far. There wasn't too much brought into play. Um, initially, the discussion was looking at the upper portion um for grounding the uh telephone poles and the lines. And then the walkability up there, um it's been shifted maybe down to the lower section. But that won't necessarily handle the telephone poles and lines because we don't have enough money to make that nicer and to do that. So um at this point, it's gonna come back to council for details so they can make a decision on what we want to focus on, so. And that's a a big time, possibly CSU project. It could be, it could be more our project, so that's also being discussed. And what has to be done for infrastructure for the water and sewer as well. So, so really not a lot at this point um to say about it, except that we'll come back to council uh shortly with some details.
Right, we'll keep our ears out for that. We could probably, if anyone asks, we can say it's probably not gonna happen this year.
The, I believe we have to start doing something by the end of the year uh because of the grant, so we, something's gonna be happening.
The magic year, Corey, is twenty twenty-eight, okay.
So, so we'll be, we'll be working on something here. We'll be doing something. I just don't know what that something is yet.
I have a question for you. Um, the URA hired a new director. Um, how would it best that we interface with said director? Does it make sense that we get to meet her and and talk through what um uh micro mobility and and parking and all of our goals and and vision statement look like for the URA? Um, how would you recommend we interface with that person? I mean, other than just reaching out, I mean, I'd love to invite her to one of our meetings and just kind of get her acquainted with what we do and our objectives uh in order to especially help support the ask for the Ped Bridge money.
So I think it was today, all the days are mixing up to me, but I believe today she emailed me um since I just met her about a month ago um to talk about the Ped Bridge area and and get her up to speed on the Dillon. Um, and I'll go ahead and just ask her if she's interested in maybe coming to this meeting, next meeting, or or even if one of you wanted to go to their meeting um and introduce yourself and what you all do or something, you know, so I, let me just reach out and ask her if there's a way she'd like to handle that. And then uh I'll let, I'll let Corey know and uh he can decide on the agenda for that, so.
Yeah, I think we'd be, we'd be glad to have her uh just come and say hello and and talk a little bit uh at her convenience, so.
Okay, sounds good. Then I'll, I'll be in touch.
Okay.
I, I have one more question, comment about some of these infrastructures, particularly it came to mind for for Ruxton. Similar to how I'd like to have us to have a back pocket response of what our board wants when it comes to the um Mountain Metro. Would it be beneficial for us to have conversation about understanding thoroughly that corridor on Ruxton? And to have our wish list, I mean, there's so many studies, our board could of, of course, have good input. But if hypothetically, we were up to speed with everything, to have our recommendations on hand, you know, ready to go. So as council goes to work sessions at um, you know, day-long work sessions, retreats, even just a normal um uh session, it would be nice for them to have what we think just on hand. You know, I'm, I'm looking at all these different topics and I think it would be beneficial for us to have some of these comments ready to go uh when requested. And um at a timely.
So they.
Time area, yeah.
The only, the only thing at this point is that it went through community, uh they did present this conceptual design. So a lot of things were brought there to uh get to a place where we are today, and I know time-wise, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult, but I, I'll leave that up to uh Natalie here to see if there's maybe a a council connection here with you all.
Sure. Um, whenever you mention the Rust, Ruxton project, I just play this, I sing this song, you can't always get what you want in my head. Um, so how much is six million, I think? Is that what we have? What do we have?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the number you look at.
Yeah, so I think um, I think it would be great if. Yeah, so I think um, I think it would be great if you were to give us suggestions. I have a feeling. That between tariffs and everything, we're probably just gonna replace this, we might just replace the sewer line, like it might be.
Correct.
Like, I mean, there's and that, and so it might actually not even. Be exciting in any way, shape or form. I mean, I think, you know, and that's, and I think that's where we kind of landed at the end was. We might just do one thing.
Right, there's this, there's this not uh a lot of money and, I mean, to give you an idea to uh underground. Um, the power lines and all that, right? One uh for about a hundred feet, it's probably about three thousand dollars. It could be more in that corridor. Per house that we have to get to um and and that, then we're talking sixty to a hundred. Just for that uh homes that we'd have to attach to. So that part is probably not realistic. And if we just do uh the infrastructure sidewalks and things like that to make it look good, then if we ever decide to move the poles. Uh, uh, from that section, we'll have to destroy what we just built. So it came down to it with the money, what's going to be the most important thing? Sewer storm, um, storm drains, um, and maybe some of the water connections from the city side would might be the priorities.
Sure, and and that all makes sense, right? I think what I was ultimately falling back to is what does our wish list look like? In a perfect world, that way, so when council is faced with any kind of decisions, whether it's uh fourth out, four million or. Or forty million, they know where we stand. And that could be on a variety of topics. And ultimately, that's what I was getting at is how do we start developing? What our common core, you know, ideas and ideologies are. And so that way, when requested. They're kind of already established regardless of what project and how much money, just kind of. Understanding, does that make sense? So pardon uh, yeah.
I'm gonna comment on that. I think, you know. We've been having these discussions with council about like, what's the best way that we can be supportive and and um find our rhythm as a board in a way that is is. Um, providing meaningful support in in whatever way to counsel. My sense on the Ruxton topic is um. We, we might be maybe best as individual citizens to get up to speed and start to attend some of the council meetings. Um, I think things are happening really quickly at at the council meetings and it's not something that council is looking to the map board for. Recommendations on. Um, saying that, I think we could, we, we're able to pick anything we'd like in the city and if we, you know, if. If we want to say, look, let's get the draft plan, uh, the status that it's in right now and roll our sleeves up and. Go through and see if we can come up with our recommendations. I think we're free to do that. And I guess I'm just saying, my sense is that um council's looking at this so intently, they're not really um counting on us to provide. Input on the Ruxton thing. Is that?
I think, I mean, it could if we actually got to something, you know. Involving anything aside from, again, like stormwater, right? I mean, I think it's just not going to be an exciting moment. It's just going to be a, this is. We've all said we are not giving this grant back. We are spending this money. I mean, that's happening. However, that being said. I don't think whatever we end up doing is gonna actually feel like we've done much, but it'll be really important for the infrastructure of the community, but. And that's, would you agree? I mean, it's just.
Yes.
It's just not an exciting moment. It was kind of sad.
Yeah, it's not kind of what I think was initially thought. Um, also though, to your point, Luke, if um, when we do have any, any mobility or transportation. Programs, you know, we do have a community stakeholder meetings and things, and it's going to be very important, I think, that. You all as individuals even come to that part of the map board and part of being residents to those and put in your opinions. Like we've done at some of these other ones. So that's critical, I think, and and then you can help even educate a few people in that room while you're. You know, because they don't always understand the the parking and mobility, so when they have questions, you can, you can tell them, you know. It's not if, uh, they're not always official meetings and things like that, so there are some uh core, um, not core, um. Um, uh, sunshine law uh challenges, but as long as you're there doing your thing. And not forming into a group as a map board meeting, then we're, we're okay anyway, but. Um, but I would definitely get involved with those things because that's where everything's coming together from the community. And then where you can have some input uh with your expertise on the board, so.
And I believe there is, there's uh some, some kind of like, there's a draft document about the Ruxton um.
Ye- yes, conceptual designs and things were, uh, I think probably two years ago now.
Yeah, is that document online or?
It's a great question.
Could I request that, that maybe we get that document sent out to this group?
Yeah, let me find it.
At least we can be a bit more familiar with it, knowing that things have changed and and. We're not gonna be able to do everything, but.
Let me find that, I'll send it out, okay? And you guys can take a look at.
That'd be great.
What people thought about and stuff like that.
How's that sound? So the only thing I see on here under requested updates is on the metro district. Um, Natalie has already told us that she's not able to share more information. Um.
Okay. Hi, guys. Um, so I can um fill you in on on our part of it. We can, I can't talk about the um. Resolution to uh dissolve the district or not, that, that I cannot, I'm not allowed to talk about this, but. Um, there's been a lot of activity uh surrounding the bathrooms. And I think that's been a huge mistake on our part, and um I think that we will be having the bathrooms back up operational. Within days, hopefully, and that has been our goal. For a long time, what's been my goal for a long time is to get the bathrooms back up and going, so. Regardless of the outcome of the um, if the metro is gonna be here or not, um, that is gonna, I think that will be a. A great benefit for everyone involved, and I wish it had never been closed, and I think the majority of the metro district believes that um. It should have never been closed, but it was. Um. Uh, but I, I think it's going to be opened again, so you can hold me to that. If it's not open in the next couple of weeks, you can, can look me up, but uh hopefully we'll have that going soon. Regardless, so um, any questions I can answer about the metro? Be glad to do that, Luke.
Uh, so I guess I'll, I'll kind of kick things off with some observations and maybe you can correct me where I'm wrong.
Go ahead.
Um, city voted to submit an application to the Metro Dip District requesting the dissolution. So if they agree, the metro district will work together with the city to dis- for the disposition of assets. And if they don't agree, they being the metro board, it'll go to a vote, right? Am I so far so good?
Well, the, it's, it's, this is something that's never actually happened before in the state of Colorado, this whole in um. Situation, so it's, it's very murky. Uh, and I think the lawyers are gonna probably make a lot of money off of this. But that's not our, our problem here, so I, I don't know, but yes, it, it, they have requested that. And um metro has uh retained um attorneys to, to. Submit our um application for that, so we're gonna do everything possible to um stay within the law. And um, one thing I want to mention, though, that the metro lots. Are not owned by the city and the city has never actually paid any amount of money to the city. And the taxpayers of Manitou have actually never paid any amount to that either, so it's unfortunate people think it's, oh, it's city. Well, it's not. It's the same thing as Uncle Sam's parking lot. It's not the city, and those aren't the cities either. Now, I know there's a lot of um. You know, disinformation about metro and um, there's a lot of hard feelings between both sides. Uh, I think a lot of it has been deserved on our part that we have not. Um, been the best at communication of what we want to do, so hopefully this will be resolved. In a uh way that the city and the people who actually own the, the lots, and that is the Metropolitan District. Which is only about two hundred and twenty people, actually, so um, it's not the entire city of Manitou. It's only about two hundred and twenty of us. And uh, so that has been the difference and um, you know, I, I know that um. There's been a lot of uh angst about the bathrooms. But I think that's going to be resolved, and if that's put behind us, maybe. An agreement will be able to come between the two parties, but if not, then they'll have to be go, go into court.
Thank you. I, I do have a, thank you, Ralph. I have a few questions along the way. Um, so, am I understanding correctly that if it goes the route? Like, the ideal of the dissolution, like, the ideal situation would be to turn over the assets, not to the city. But to the same, mostly the same entities within the business, business improvement district, so. The people within the business improvement district are mostly the same people. And entities within mountain, or not mountain, the metro district. So would it be?
A lot of overlap.
Yeah, a lot of overlap. Would it be more so a uh, uh, coming together of those two entities? And the city as a third party? Because I understand that the city, I mean, you admit, I've, I've seen that Julie Wolf was mistaken in that the city would just acquire these lots. I understand that they, they don't belong to the city, so would the ideal situation with city council be? To move it from one district to the other? Ideally, because I mean, it sounded like city council really wants to move those funds into the business improvement district. To pay for a lot of beautification and snow plowing and then maybe even a river walk that was stated in the original. Um, plan for the creation of the metro district. Uh, so is that the ideal goal? Is?
That is the possibility. Um, there's so many different possibilities and um, that, that could definitely happen. That it would just morph into the bid, and I understand the benefits of that. Uh, and that, that's a possibility, but there's also a possibility of liquidating and selling of assets and then refunding all of the um. Actual members of the Metropolitan District, the two hundred and fifty of us. And um, so they would have to be compensated in the end, so there's so many legal. Bars that we're gonna have to hit. So I just want to say on, on our, our side, the metro side is that we're trying to be honest about this. And um, we're gonna work with the um, the courts and move forward on that and uh. Regardless of what happens in the end, we're still all neighbors and I think that we'll still all get along well. And I really am, I, it's very unfortunate that it has led to this point that we've had to divorce um. Between the two, two entities, so in the end, I hope that there'll be a, 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 a good agreement with the bid. Luke, great idea. I think that's a great idea because there's so much overlap there. Um, and but. The goal is not to just use this funds to. Go into the city coffers because none of the city actually participated in this. So if you weren't in the bid. Uh, if you weren't in the metro district, you didn't have any participation in this, and I've been actually paying this middle levy tax for twenty-five years now. And there's a lot of us been paying that, but the six thousand other residents of Manitou have not been paying that, so that's why. Uh, I understand the frustration of city council. Um, and I feel it also, but you know, the, the facts are that we are gonna move forward and uh let. Let the decisions be made by other people, but I want to uh, at least my voice on this is to do it in a. Friendly, neighborly way and uh to see what happens, so um. I, I know that um many of you are upset about the bathroom issue and I, I think that was probably the final straw in the back and that's why they did that, so. I hope to be able to take that off the table soon and to get the bathrooms up and going again, so. But yes, Luke, I think it's a great idea about the bid.
When it go, that's mostly city councils, um, that's my observation of what their thoughts were. Another question, though, is when, if it goes for a vote, is it people within the? Is it residents of Manitou Springs that vote for this or would?
No, it's just, it's just the metro district, so you have to realize it's kind of like, it's kind of like Crystal, Crystal Park. They have their own basically metropolitan district, Cedar Heights, what have you. Everyone has their own, so it's, it's, it's kind of, I know everybody, we've let people believe that. The metropolitan district is Manitou and those parking lots. It's not, it never has been. The city of Manitou has never actually contributed at all to the metro district. We've had a great relationship with Manitou now for over forty years, I believe, with them. Unfortunately, that relationship has soured tremendously. Um, and I'm not blaming the city on that. I'm blaming the metro district on that and I'm part of that, so I, I am sorry that happened, but. Yeah, so that vote would go just to the metro, so that is our, it is our thing, just like I wouldn't be able to vote on anything in Crystal Park. Cause I don't live in Crystal Park, even that's part of Manitou, but I don't have anything to say with that. It's just like. Little hills, you don't have anything to say with that, so.
Final question with this, so the original, I guess, service plan. Uh, for the metro district included um funds, some funds going towards a river walk. Right, so with that not objective have not been completed and regardless of what the. What the outcome's going to be, I'm hoping that in some capacity, we can flag some of the funds. In this district and aim them specifically and directly towards Creek Walk and micro mobility. Whether that's through those properties or through the entire district, which would be fantastic. So we were talking earlier about where are we gonna find funds. I think, I mean, I don't wanna give somebody else's money away. But if there's a specific objective that has not been met and there's funds to be dispersed. I think there's reasonable assumption that maybe they should have completed said objectives before the payout.
Right, and I've been on this district for so long. I, I, I've been on it for so many, Natalie knows how long I've been on this. Um, on this metro board, so we have actually, and the metro has actually donated part of our lot to the city. Um, about this too, and we have contributed that in the past, and I don't know the exact number, so I think ma- the. The mount, the Metropolitan District has been a good partner with the River Walk and uh we've worked with every single thing, anybody times come to it. We've funded uh different uh prospects in the past, and I am definitely open to helping that. Continue more. It's just that it's been such an ongoing, I've been talking about the River Walk for. You know, decades now and um, and it goes right to the, the metro parking lot, actually two of them, so. And we did, when we did the Shmishki Lot, we made sure the back of it was part of it and we donated part of that land to the city also. For the River Rock, so today, I just want to clear that up is that we have partnered with them. And we will continue with that goal completely, so.
Thank you, Ralph. Appreciate talking with you.
Yeah, and I, I, we're all good neighbors here and uh this is not personal at all and I call, I consider you all friends still. And uh no matter the outcome, I think um, I'm gonna do what's, what I think is best for Manitou and I think so is uh. All the city council is too, so I, I don't, you know, grudge anybody on this action, so. Thanks, that's all I can say for now. Take care.
All right, I think we'll move on from that and um, yeah, hopefully we'll, we'll be a way that we could be a s- supportive of a. Of a collaborative solution somehow. Um, it's a little outside what we usually do. Okay, uh, so we'll keep moving on now into some project updates. Uh, staff update on Black Canyon is the next one here. Is that gonna be you one?
Uh, that'll be me. Uh, James, if you could put the slide uh before that, I'd like to just go over the digital permitting, because I know that was one of the. You wanted an update from last month. Yeah, okay, I, I, we don't have a lot, so I can quickly do that if you want, Corey. The Black Canyon, uh, just, and this is all I have, I was talking to Jillian, basically the, the master plan is on the city council agenda for. Next week, um, and the O S A C and consultants will be there present, so um, I would suggest if you have interest in seeing where they're at with that. Just go next week to the city council meeting, and that's all we know as well until we get that presentation.
Yeah, I know, I know there's um, we've had some discussion on this board about the uh, you know, the concept of having a bridge that would support. Um, people accessing that new space, and so that's something that's potentially gonna happen. Um, I was happy to see in that plan, there is consideration of at least, you know, how, how do, how are people? Um, I was happy to see in that plan, there is consideration of at least, you know, how, how are people gonna safely get across the street at that spot. And so, I think there's plans at least to, um, create a standard crosswalk. Any other questions or comments about Black Canyon? Keep moving.
Okay, just, just an update on the digital parking. I know there was some concerns last month that, um, you, people were having a hard time, but, uh, we did list the numbers of what we did January of last year and February of last year compared to where we are now. And both, uh, for the RPP residents, we have exceeded 114 for January and then 146% um, for the month of February. It, it's been working out great. The school, the school and a couple of the churches have, uh, reached out to our vendor, uh, just because he'd liked, uh, digital parking. There's a lot of control, uh, with it. And, um, even with our lots, uh, we were, we were kinda slow on the first month with 67%, but then in February, we exceeded that by 148%. And, uh, we're almost done to, uh, get everybody on, on digital permitting. Which is gonna be, uh, great, um, great measures that we have in place to enforce it. And we also had, um, we got some pushback with the, with the hand tags. So, we reverted back to also handing out the bar, you know, the hand tags, but now they have a unique barcode that, uh, cannot be duplicated and can be enforced by our parking enforcement officers.
Any questions about the digital permitting? I'm thinking we're gonna sorta see how this shakes out. So, my understanding of, from what you just said, Juan, um, a resident should have their, uh, hang tag on their mirror and then staff will be able to somehow assess whether that's, uh, whether it's valid.
Correct, they'll be able to scan it and, uh, it'll, it won't be able to be duplicated. Uh, where before, uh, they had hand tags but without a barcode or, but now it will have that unique code that won't be able to be duplicated.
Was that a pretty big problem where people?
It, it was, uh, there was a lot of duplication with a lot of the permits, uh, people were, you know, just.
Those Manitou residents, I mean, we're smart.
Right. Uh, we, we figured that this was a way to, uh, really put some measures in place so that people weren't abusing it and also protecting the residents, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that update. Um, actually, I'm just gonna add one more thing on that. I did stop in the parking office to, uh, to try to go through that process. I had signed up online and I was trying to figure out what was going on. It really seemed to me that there was a lot of, um, manual work, like a lot of touching that needed to happen even with this digital program. And, uh, really, my thought was, gosh, poor James, he's, he's got so much work to do here. I'm wondering if there's anything we can do to support or just, you know, highlight that, that idea that, uh, you know, the, the process seems to be quite onerous on staff and I'm, would love to know if there's a way we could support making that easier for staff.
We, we started to do it, we, we started, uh, working collectively in the office to, uh, you know, especially for those who were Aztec savvy, you know, so that, and we were able to help them out, help out residents that. We just wanted to make it easier for the, but now, you know, everything's been a lot better now.
And, uh, one thing that I will say in terms of the, the, the manual work, kind of what you observed, the tough part about the, the, the new process is, um, is just getting, getting folks set back up on the new system. We do still have access to older records. But, uh, in my experience, um, automating, um, those records to be transferred from one system to another, it's not an easy process. It's, it's very time consuming, time that we unfortunately did not have. And it also introduces a lot of, of weird issues. Transferring data from, from one system to another. One good example of this is when we switched, um, from Complus, our, our old parking enforcement, uh, citation management, uh, service to, to T2. We've had a lot of, of issues stemming from that, that conversion. Um, and that's just because there's, uh, different systems. They, they all use, uh, different types of coding and, and language to, to manage their systems and it doesn't always translate very well. So, a, a lot of the, the cumbersome aspect is just getting people set back up on the new accounts. And some accounts, uh, that were, that were set up early on, uh, I'm not really sure, um, what's, what's happened with some of those. We've, we've had to recreate some of our, our original, uh, account setups and the folks that, that first went online and, and register accounts and then ended up running into problems, um, that later came into the office. Those folks, we, we essentially just ended up having to remake their accounts. So, um, it, once we get everybody into the system or even people that go online and just don't fully understand the process, that, that going online and filling out all their information really does, um, help us in the office. That allows us to, to get their physical passes very quickly. So, I think once we get everybody on the new system, it'll be really as simple as just verifying that they still live in their neighborhood and, and issuing the permit. So, we're, we're, we're really getting the, uh, the, the processes down, trying to make this as smooth as possible. That way, going into future years, we can, um, we can really be on top of it. Um, I think this year, there was just a lot of technical issues and, and things that, that we didn't necessarily catch ourselves. But, um, being, being involved in the, the, the parking world, it, it's very easy to miss things. So, I think getting it out to the public and getting as much feedback as we have, um, has really helped, uh, kinda clean up the process overall.
Thanks, James. And I guess I'll just say, here's hoping we don't have to switch to another different system next year, cuz it really did look like that was a, a big lift. So, thanks to everyone who was involved in making that change. Okay, shall we roll into golf carts?
Yeah, so, um, I work closely with Gregory Cobble, who is a business owner. And I, I put together an ordinance after doing other studies with other cities, uh, including Colorado Springs, uh, City Estes, Estes Park, and there were three other cities that were about the same size as Manitou that had golf carts, uh, you, you, being used for tours or other, um, park activities. Uh, this is, this is currently what the golf carts look like. Uh, they will have a license plate. Once I put the ordinance together, it was shared with the police department and also Jeff Parker, Jeff Parker, our city attorney. And we will, we'll get this approved. Uh, we will need to take this to city council for, uh, final approval. We wanted to bring it before, uh, our board, uh, to hopefully have a unanimous vote on it. And, um, can you go to the next slide? Yeah, so, uh, it, he, he's looking at currently, uh, a five percent, uh, five percent tax that will go back to the city. They're probably looking at doing about 100 thou, you know, 100,000 per year. And, uh, they, he is looking, uh, this is gonna help mitigate congestion and he's gonna use it for tours from like, uh, starting from Garden of the Gods, bringing people into the city and, uh, giving them a tour throughout and back over to his location. But, um, this is where, we wanted to present this ordinance to everyone here and, uh, hopefully, we can get a unanimous vote on it before it goes to, uh, city council.
So, Juan, I noticed this is, this is not, uh, listed for action on this agenda? So, we weren't planning on voting on this today. Was it your wish that this would be an action item?
Well, this, this was, uh, we just wanted to share to get, uh, would, would that be a vote, Roy?
Um, what we are, are always hoping is that, that the advisory group can either show support or not. Because when we go to council, we wanna state to council that, that the map board supports this. And even, you know, like, like five to two or whatever it is, it's okay, we can put, it is. But that's, we, we wanna get either, there's support or not. And, uh, and it is going to council in two weeks, right?
Sure looks interesting.
How, um, Roy, how does it help congestion?
Well, yeah, I'll let, I'll let Juan talk about that.
Okay, sorry, Juan, how does it help congestion?
Uh, instead of bringing cars into, uh, into the city, they would park, they would park at their location and he would just be able to bring the, the people on, on the golf cars. He would have multiple car, golf cars, uh, to bring people into the tours and to, and through the city versus bringing, allowing people to come in vehicles and, and parking them in our city.
And so, someone would be driving these people?
Yes, so, so somebody will be designated, uh, driving these golf cars and there'll be people, they'll, they'll be driving on board.
So, they'll all be on the same road where the cars are?
Yes, they, they will, they will have to park in a parking spot. Uh, they, they don't, the turnaround, they, they won't park there for long periods of time because it's pretty much pulling in, uh, picking up and dropping off and, uh, and going back to their location.
Thank you.
So, I got, I've got a few questions. So, um, who sets the 5% tax revenue?
That's what's collected, you know, from, from his business.
And is that, that's just a standard? And, and he thinks he's gonna do 100,000 a year, so Manitou would get 5,000 a year?
About.
Okay?
Yeah.
Got a few more questions, but why don't you go ahead, Carl?
So, uh, a comment, two comments and, and then a question. So, one, um, on the map, it appears to show the start and finish at the e-bike tours and rental, um, station, if you will, uh, by the subway, um, where they rent out their e-bikes. So, I don't know if that's where they're gonna park the golf carts. But if the map is accurate, um, that's what that appears to, to look like to me. And conceptually, I support the idea, right? It seems a good way, like Juan mentioned, you know, get people out of cars, get them, you know, a bunch of people on a, a golf cart. It's slow moving, you know, that kinda thing. And they're able to tour the city and get insights and all that, so that's super cool. I did go through the ordinance and I have a number of questions and I would want them answered before I would vote for approval. So, I don't know how you want feedback on the details in the ordinance, but I have a list of questions.
Yeah, you can, you can always, uh, that's why I send it to everybody ahead of time so that I can get any feedback, uh, in, in writing.
Before we jump into that list, well, I guess I, I wanna make this observation that, like, we're proposing a change to the ordinance that, that is going to allow a device and I don't think that ordinance restricts it to just this person. So, basically, anyone in Manitou or anyone from anywhere could also get a golf cart.
So, eventually, uh, they will have to go through an application per, uh, process. And this is only gonna be, we want, we'd like to start it only with, uh, businesses, not residents. I think with residents.
But that's not in the ordinance, is it?
It is. We, we created this ordinance, we didn't have one.
Where does it reference businesses only in the ordinance?
Yeah, from what I can see, it allows the devices. It doesn't say that this would be businesses. It doesn't say that it would only be driven by designated drivers. Doesn't talk, it doesn't talk anything about the business itself. It just says, these are the devices and it models the Colorado.
Right, and, and that would be, that would be like in the application process, that would, uh, state that and it would tie it in with the, with the ordinance. Cuz it was got, it, it has gone through, uh, Jeff Parker and the police department and it has everything that, uh, that they required.
Okay, well, I won't specifically comment on the legal advice that the city of Manitou Springs is getting, but I will say that I don't think that language does exist in the ordinance that's been proposed.
And you can, and you can include that in the, any questions you have, you can include it in, in writing back to me so that I can, uh, include it.
Okay, so, what I wanna know is.
On either one.
What is our intention here? It sounds like our intention is, we'd like to allow some tours with these devices.
Correct.
So, if we are to make an ordinance change, I think it's gotta be accompanied by the permitting process for those. That they, they have, they have to come forward together. Otherwise, you've got an ordinance and, you know, I, I don't think you can later come back and say, oh, by the way, you, you bought a golf cart, but you're not allowed to use it anymore.
So, my, my opinion here is that we're getting too much in the weeds with this. What we would like to know from the board, do you basically agree or not agree with us allowing golf carts used for businesses in town? On the operations and the legal aspects will be up to us as a city to decide.
Roy, the only, or Juan, the only I'm trying to envision, I know that when the tours are in the Garden of the Gods and the open tour things are going, they'll have long, long lines of cars behind them because, you know, they don't pull over to let the traffic go by. So, I envision a golf course going down Manitou and then all this line of traffic. I'm, I'm just having trouble envisioning if this is going to help us or hurt us. But I, I agree with you that a lot of this stuff is operational and we shouldn't really be talking about it.
I, um, my opinion on this is, I think it's a fabulous idea and I think we should move forward with it. Uh, it's kinda like this, we had the same talk about e-bikes, thinking that might cause problems and might cause some problems, but, uh, to have electric golf carts that is controlled by businesses, by ordinance, not everybody with them, but I think it's a great idea. And, um, I like the path that's going on El Paso, not on Manitou Avenue, uh, then it gets back. I think we should try it. I think we should support that.
Can I throw just some additional info in?
Sorry, who's speaking?
This is James.
Go ahead, James.
Yeah, so, um, also on the agenda for this evening, um, and you'll note that these golf cars do travel, um, maximum 25 miles an hour, most of them. If, if the city implements a citywide speed limit change to 20 or 25 miles per hour, they will be, uh, able to travel at legal speed limits.
Yeah, and it's not, where it's 30 anyway, it's not doing it. It's on El Paso, so that's 20 miles an hour anyway. Except for that one section there from, um, I guess, from the pool over, so.
Carl, why don't you go ahead with your questions?
So, I don't wanna get too deep in the weeds and, and, you know, so I support the idea and concept. For me, my biggest concern, like, I think Corey, is the way this is written, it seems wide open and, you know, and so if we can restrict it to businesses. And then as well, just, you know, the definition of an electric golf cart and low speed vehicle is pretty abstract. And, you know, so like, I might start a business and hey, I take my old Honda Civic and try and cram, you know, a Ford Mustang electric motor in it and, you know, I'm gonna be cruising around Manitou in it, right? And is, you know, oh, I'll obey the speed limit, but, you know, I might be going zero to 25 and a half second in it or whatever. And so, it's just trying to define proper boundaries such that it's truly a golf cart that has limited maximum speed. I don't care what the speed limit is. I, I'm more concerned about definition of a max speed limit of these vehicles because people are gonna look at this and potentially interpret the ordinance differently than you're thinking and abuse it is my biggest concern.
Yeah, I think, so if, if, I, when, when I look at the ordinance, the definition of the golf cart isn't in the ordinance. I think it's, refers to what is in the, the model traffic code. Is that, that's, that's our plan is like, our, our ordinance won't have a definition, we will refer to the state's definition? Is that?
Yes.
That's the intention?
That was, that, that was also pretty similar to. And that was, that, that was also pretty similar to, uh, other, other cities, including Colorado Springs as and I believe the city of Estes Park as well.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, so it sounds like the key parts of this that we need for you, for you all to be, agree with it is number one, that it's, it's specific to businesses. Um, that could be one of the requests from the board, I guess, I'm, I'm gonna throw these out here, I could be off, so let me know, but that it's restricted to businesses.
Or, or that that question is clarified?
Okay, put that as your thing, that you'd like it clarified, but that's what we want it for right now, is for businesses from the, the parking office. We don't want it for residential use at this time, just for business use. And they would have to go through that process of, of getting a permit through the parking office.
And it's a permit, not a license plate, is that correct?
These are not, uh, uh, they don't, they don't have license plates for golf carts, but so, but it would be approved by the, uh, police department. And we'd have a registration system and we'd have some kind of sign system, I guess, or identifier for the police. So we would know they are legal on our street only in Manitou, uh, uh, areas, uh, city limits. Um, and then the other thing is that they're, they're, I guess, probably, uh, um, vehi- vehicle safe or car safety features are included, things like that are normally also part of those things, so. Uh, no different when we did our, uh, trams, we had to have seat belts and so that could be part of that. So if you wanna put some stipulations onto approving these with these things that you'd like to see implemented, I think that's totally fair. And that could be something that we then bring in to council. Council, uh, that the, the map board agrees with this, but would like to see that it's only for business use at this time, you know, things like that. So if you wanna add those things on there, I, I don't mind to have a list of what you'd like to see for the approval. And, and then we'll work on that ordinance, get that approved, work through our city attorney and, and see if council agrees as well and wants to move forward on it.
Let me just jump on a couple of things here, so there's like, in, in the ordinance that was shared, it said that there would be a list of streets where they wouldn't be allowed. And that list is currently blank, do we intend that?
Well, it, that's, uh, the reason it was left like that was because, uh, we wanted everybody's feedback and that's why I sent two emails last month to get feedback. Pretty much everything that Roy is stating right now was requested in that email. Um, so that we, then we could discuss it here at the-
So you, you're asking us to come up with the streets that we think would not, would not be suitable?
Suggestions, feedback, uh, concerns.
Okay. And I guess, yeah, big, big question, and Carl and I were talking about this before. Do, do we have the authority to allow them on Manitou Avenue, which is a CDOT road?
Yes, we can, we can get approval easy, I mean, our trams were the same situation, so. Anywhere in Manitou, to me, it's just a contact with my, uh, CDOT representative. They're not gonna have an issue with it, we already had trams out there, did the same thing. Um, that's not a problem, and then on our streets, uh, we have no problem with that as well, um, because we can govern this, uh, city. Um, uh, I forgot the, the term for it, but we are allowed to, to make the rules for the city of Manitou Springs. So there's a sp- specific name of that and I can't remember what it's called.
I think it's Home Rule.
What's that?
Home Rule.
Home Rule?
Yeah, I think that's what-
That's correct, Joy, thank you very much, yeah, it's called Home Rule, so we're allowed to make our rules. And again, CDOT has been very flexible. Um, all I do is reach out and if there's something they have concerns with, we try to work within their parameters as well.
Roy, have you already spoken to CDOT about this particular one?
Uh, no, I have not, uh, this, this is, uh, Project One was moving ahead with, we were trying to see if, if the map board, um, believes it would be a good idea to run this type of program and then we'll work on all the specifics and safety features and work with the police department, um, to make sure it's, it's, uh, set up properly.
So it's gonna be permitted, so they're gonna be vetted, um, check their insurance and everything. So I, I think any of the fears that we have are misplaced on this because that company's viable for it. So I'm still for it. And, um, the, the roads, I think the road that you have up there is fine, it's, uh, El Paso, it's Manitou Avenue. It's, um, Canyon, um, Ruxton, Lover's Lane possibly, I don't know, so.
But Ralph, no, that's a, that's a proposed route, but not, that's not part of the ordinance, right? So that's just, that, that's, that's what this, the business is proposing would be the route.
Right, right.
You know, I, I'm not saying one way or another, but I mean, do, would we wanna restrict it to that route? Or put any other kind of restrictions? So, so my understanding is that there will be a permitting process that you guys are gonna develop, it's not, that's not quite ready. It's your intention that it would be for businesses only. Um, and it would be open equally to any business, but, uh, your, your intention that it's for commercial tours only.
Yeah, we would allow it in one, uh, uh, business, uh, to put in the permit and go from there.
Okay, and half the Jeep tours that come through town, they're not contributing 5% of tax revenues. They just drive through our town. So we get nothing off of them, so this is, we're kinda recouping some of it and, um, consolidating, but it might look really silly, who knows, but I'm, I'm ready to take the chance and um, Juan did say it's a, it's a, um, project, you know, it's, it's a program, it's not set in stone, we do it for a year and see how it goes.
Well, it's, we're, we're making a change to the ordinance, so it's, it's not a pilot, it doesn't have a time duration.
Pilot, I mean, right, yeah.
We, we, we are, the proposal is to change the ordinance and, um, you know, you'd, you'd have to, it doesn't automatically revert if it's not approved, it's not proposed as a pilot.
Right. I, um, I like it, I like the bikes, I want scooters, but I know people don't want those yet, so, but I, I definitely support this, so.
Well, it's interesting to bring up that parallel and maybe we could talk some more about that too. Carl?
Sorry, since we, Ralph mentioned scooters, I have one, uh, quick comment. Um, so when we talk about scooters, everybody is quick to talk about geofencing. Um, and so just for, uh, parody's sake, have we considered geofencing for these electric golf carts? To make sure that they stay within Manitou city limits, cause they also geofence Pike Ride, right? So if we're gonna use, uh, equality, uh, in, for mode, uh, we might wanna consider geofencing. And I say that, I don't expect that that to happen, but just trying to push the envelope here and, and hey, are we treating everybody the same?
Well, I think, I would say a, a really big difference is, this is commercial tours with the, it, it, it's not a share, right? It's not like you can, someone could just sign one of these out and it, it's gonna be part of a tour, is, is the intention through the permit process. So I would think a geofence probably wouldn't be applicable?
Probably for a business, yeah, no, I, and just to, to clarify, so if the driver of one of these for a business is not obeying the law, Manitou City Police can pull them over, ticket them, ask for proof of registration, the whole deal, just like they were in any motor, motor vehicle.
Correct, yeah. I will, and to Joy's point on the speed limit, the concern there, looking at the map, you know, it, it is pretty much twenty miles per hour in all these sections except that section from the pool to Mayfair, I think that may be. Um, but, but the good news from Mayfair section, it does come off a traffic light and tends to be a slower starting zone. So, um, it probably won't cause too much traffic from that point.
Thank you.
And I actually have an alternative viewpoint on that. To me, I think having slower-moving vehicles is a positive for the city, cause that slows traffic in general down and keeps people from speeding. And so to me, I view that extremely positively.
Um, that's true to a degree, but Carl, I will say that there's also some evidence, uh, that people then uh, swerve around them, get frustrated when they're not going speed limit, so there is a negative side effect to going below speed limit as well.
And, and so we're all on the same page? The ordinance that proposed will, would allow golf carts that have a maximum speed up to thirty-five miles an hour. Am I?
They're allowed on streets that have a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit or less.
You're right, you're right.
Sorry.
They're allowed on the streets with speed limits of thirty-five or less. And then it's in the traffic code, it says what they are, does it have a max speed in the traffic code? Anybody know?
So I just wanna go back to Roy's comment, I mean, just because people break the law doesn't mean that we shouldn't do something, right? I mean, that's, to me, that's an enforcement issue.
Well, it, it is, but if someone's going below speed limit, that causes its own set of problems, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And so it's, and it could ca- I'm not saying they, we should allow that, obviously we shouldn't. But it does contribute to that when people are not following the posted speed limit as well, it can cause problems.
It is a speed limit, it's not the speed, you know, you don't have to drive the speed limit, but anyways, sure, a whole nother discussion, sure.
Yeah, and bikes don't go that fast either, and they're on the roads.
Well, I think bikes go pretty fast.
They do nowadays, yeah. Carl goes pretty fast, I've seen him go pretty fast and-
Yeah, they go pretty fast.
Ju- just to clear-
No, kidding.
I did find it in the, in the model traffic code that this ordinance would refer to in, in section thirty-nine point five under the definition of a golf car. Um, I'll just read it, it means a self-propelled, propelled vehicle not designed primarily for operation on roadways. And that has, A, a design speed of less than twenty miles an hour, B, at least three wheels in contact with the ground, C, an empty weight of not more than one thousand three hundred pounds, and D, a carrying capacity of not more than four persons. Now I'm gonna look at the image there.
I mean, why are we, I have to ask, I know I'm gonna have to leave the meeting soon, I, I'm not sure what we're trying to solve with this, checking the the codes and things right now. I think what Roy is asking is for us to say, would we support the concept and details are gonna be worked out, nothing set in stone. At least my, what we're trying to- I support the con- concept, yeah.
I, I, let me, let me just, uh, and Juan, correct me if I'm wrong, I, ba- basically, um, this was asked of us from a, a, um, um, a, a, a commercial business on doing this. And so, um, that's where the idea came about, there are some cities, smaller cities that are allowing golf carts for resident use, uh, smaller vehicles, um, you know, less pollution, electric, whatever. And they're having some success with that. Um, so this was brought to us, we decided to look at it, Juan worked on it with, with the business to see if it's something that's doable and try, trying it, and that's why this is being brought to council. And so, uh, it's an idea, um, not sure it'll go further than, you know, um, once we get the council, may not happen, but it, it is something that's being requested and we're trying to see if we can accommodate it. And if you all think it, uh, could work. And, and if you think there's a chance it could work, if we get everything in place correctly, and that would be our job to set it up properly with the legal side of it and through the police department, uh, and permitting. Um, then, you know, then that's helpful, either way, I believe it's going to council, we just need to know if this board thinks, um, they can support it or they're against it as a whole, you know, it, again, or, or the, uh, we just need a vote and we'll take whatever vote that is to council and then they can decide as well from there.
Wa- was there any consideration to making this a pilot with a, with a time duration and an evaluation?
Probably not, I mean, I don't know, Juan, you'll have to answer those questions.
Uh, I would say no, only because, uh, a lot of cities are doing it and, uh, so and, uh, the impact's very minimal, so, yeah, we didn't look at it as doing it as a pilot.
Okay, yeah, I just remember, you know, when we, when we considered Pike Ride, we did that as a pilot and we had evaluation and then we made a decision to make it a permanent change at the end, so, um.
That, that's a, you know, that's an interesting way to go about it, I, I think, uh, again, I, I can't remember when this is supposed to be presented, I thought it was gonna be the second week of March, but Juan, you're saying April now. Um, so maybe that's something that could be looked at still within the timeframe to see if we wanna do a pilot for it, and then maybe you don't, I don't know if we have to, I don't know how we do that, to be honest with you, with that code issue, but we'd have to look into that.
If, if there's time and we could take a formal vote on it, you know, we could plan on it being a vote at the next meeting. Um, what's that?
Oh, Juan just made my day, th- this is not until April, um, it's been moved to April eighth. So actually I feel much better, we're not in this, so we, we have a little time to kinda review some things, so, um, we can take it back a little bit and look at it, so.
And I, I guess I, I wanna say I'm overall supportive of it, I mean, Joy, the reason we're, we're digging into this is because we were asked to make a recommendation and I think there's a lot of details that are important and there could be consequences that we weren't anticipating. But like with any change that you make, and I think it's our, you know, I think it's-
Sorry, I, I don't need to be corrected and apologize.
If you could just let me finish, if you could just let me-
No, I don't think so, I don't wanna be bullied by you, not in-
You don't wanna be bullied, okay, well, I'm the chair and I'm, I've got the floor right now, so. I am saying that the reason that we are going into this detail is because we, we were asked to, to look at it and provide feedback on it and that's the role that our board has, so, um, I, I'm, I'm comfortable saying I'm supportive generally of the concept. I'd like to see some more details, I would like to see, uh, some details around the permitting process of exactly what's intended there. And I would, I wouldn't insist, but I'd feel a lot more comfortable if this were set up as a pilot with a time duration so that we could evaluate it and then make it permanent after that, rather than having to change something if something unintended did happen. So that, that's where I'm at with it, um, I'd be very happy if we put this, uh, as an action item for next month, if the timing works for that.
Uh, we would just need a, a board vote, if they all wanna do that, I would need the majority of the vote that we want to take back.
As-
Yes, this is not one person making the decision, I need the board to decide together if we take it on. So if Cory, you wanna present to the board, vote on what you asked from us and they all agree or part or the majority, then we'd be happy to bring it back.
Okay.
What, we can't be directed by one person on the board, so I'm asking you to ask the board if they agree and get the percentage.
Are you really saying this? You are asking us for a vote on something that is not listed as an action item? You're asking us to vote on this today and I'm saying I would like to make it an action item for next month.
I'm gonna pull it off, we have time to get back to this and we're gonna, uh, figure out how to go forward with this. Okay, so I'll pull the item off.
But you're telling me that we need a vote in order to put it on next month's agenda?
Yeah, I won't put it on next month's agenda, cause we can't vote like you just said. So at this point, I'll pull it off, we'll figure out how we're gonna move forward on this and then I'll bring it back if we need-
You'll pull it off what?
Uh, we're, we don't need a vote, we don't need a vote on this. I'm pulling that off, we don't need a, we don't need a vote. At this point, that's the discussion, we're presenting what we're, an idea, at this point, we'll, we'll, that's all we want. You guys have the idea, we'll bring it back at a fut- future meeting. We'll bring it back at a future meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and we can vote on that, but we're gonna bring it back at a future meeting. All this, we're not, you just said we can't vote on this. If you want us to come back with specific things, then we do have to have the board, the majority of the board to agree that it needs to come back. I'm not wrong about that, at the end of the day, you said we didn't put on to be-
You asked us to vote on it today.
Can I finish, sir, or no?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. You don't want, you said we can't vote on it tonight, isn't that what you said, we had it in the wrong area, the wrong agenda, is that correct?
I said it's not listed as an action item for a vote, that's right.
Vote on it, so I'm, so we presented it and we'll leave it at that and we'll bring it either next month or the following month, once we look at some of the, uh, discussion tonight, we'll bring it back.
Okay, so you're not asking for a vote on this now?
No vote tonight, thank you.
All right, well, I think that's a little odd.
Because, because we can't vote on it. How, how can you say we can vote on it, we just said we can't vote on it because it's not an action item?
I think maybe, Roy, you and I should talk about this offline, about how, how we put things on the agenda and what we can vote on and what we, what we don't.
We probably should.
Okay, let, let's plan to do that, okay? All right, so with that, let's move on to the RPP discussion. Where are we here? So I think everyone has, has received a copy of an annot- an annotated, uh, version with some staff comments on the RPP manual. This is a, a, um, it's one of our goals for this year that we wanna work on updating the RPP manual. Um, we have the opportunity to provide feedback on this and we wanna do it in a way that's collaborative and inclusive of everyone and we also don't wanna get, uh, a foul of, uh, the sunshine laws. So I think the way that we agreed, we would, we, we'd like to take feedback, so first of all, anyone who's interested in, um, providing feedback on changes to the RPP is encouraged to do so and, and we really wanna do that, we, we hope we provided the information, everyone's got that. If people are interested in forming up in groups of two, but not three, that is an acceptable way to, to collaborate together and, um, you know, mark up the document. And the i- the idea that we came up with when, when we made our, when we set the agenda is, we would encourage everyone on, on the committee to do that, either individually or in pairs, and send your feedback on the annotated RPP into Juan. And Juan will consolidate all of the feedback that's received and then we'll bring forward what we think is a recommended change. And then we'll bring forward what we think is a recommended changes to the R P P. Um, and we would, we would take a vote on and, you know, uh, this board would make a recommendation to council on making those changes. So the timeline that I'm looking at here is. Um. So, so we, we're not really, we're not forming a, an official subcommittee. We are inviting input from individual or pairs of members. And we'd like to have, we'd like to have those, this says here by April. I would say we could do that maybe even, I think we could accelerate that. We could say within, before the next meeting. We would like to have feedback from the board on suggestions for changes to the R P P.
By email?
Go, say again, Ralph?
By email, we'd send those suggestions in by email?
Yes.
Okay, so we'd individually send them to Juan, just not copy everybody on that, okay?
I think that's what we agreed was the best way to handle the sunshine laws.
Right, right, so just, okay, good.
Is, is that, did I have that right, Juan?
That, that's correct. He get, he gets to the, uh, directly, uh, to me.
Right.
And, you know, I, you know, I know we're running, we're running late here and I don't wanna go too deep into this, but we did have some public comment today. Um, that I thought was illuminating, uh, and a, a request to make a change. Potentially to an existing R P P, to maybe split it or to have some other kind of, uh, some other considerations. M- Mr. Nicholas brought up some, some ideas that I hadn't thought of before, so I, I will be considering those. Did anyone have, uh, does anyone have any specific, or I guess not specific, more like general conceptual? Um, things that they wanna share at this point about how we, how we're gonna approach the R P P? I'll just kick things off and say, I think we wanna make the process simpler and smoother. And certainly not, uh, reliant on a, I think right now it's twice a year is, is what the letter of the law says, that we can only consider them twice a year. I would think we would wanna consider them when they come up and try to set a target for processing them within some reasonable time period. Um, that would be an improvement over what's written. Are there other general comments anyone wants to share at this time? Okay, so we'll invite everyone to take a look at the, the annotated, um, R P P manual that's been sent out. And within the next month, get your feedback into Juan.
Juan, I, I will say thanks for getting into the R P P. Uh, this board was tasked with doing that very thing a few years ago, um, to which we had no avail. And so for you to be hired and take on one of the largest aspects of Manitou parking. And have, uh, a nice annotated version for us to review. Thank you.
Anything else on the R P P then? Okay, so we have no other presentations. We do have an ac- action item planned here, which was to, um, to get. Support or evaluate giving, uh, the map board support for changing the citywide speed limit. And reducing it from twenty-five miles an hour to fifteen or twenty miles an hour. So this is a proposal that staff had. And we had a little bit of discussion of, of what the appropriate number would be if we were to reduce it. And that's why we, you know, we're talking about fifteen or twenty miles an hour. Um. I, I personally like this idea and I'm, uh, eager to hear, uh, any, any feedback from the board.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll start with the, and kind of present the why. Um, so what we propose is a reduction in default speed limit for residential neighborhoods, uh, within Manitou Springs at twenty miles per hour. Uh, the initiative aims to enhance pedestrian and cyclist safety, improve community livability in line with broader traffic safety goals such as Vision Zero. Um, basically, of course, in Manitou Springs, we value the, uh, the safety and livability of its neighborhoods to support these priorities. The twenty mile per hour speed limit for local residence, residential streets. Similar to a policy recently implemented in Denver. Studies have shown that slower speed limits reduce the frequency of severity of traffic incidents, particularly in areas with pedestrian activity, narrow streets and limited visibility. All of which are common in Manitou Springs. The current regulations, uh, section twenty-four of the Manitou Springs Code, uh, aligns with section eleven oh one seven of the model traffic code. Which is residential districts are posted twenty-five miles per hour, are not posted are twenty-five miles per hour. Non-residential districts not posted are thirty-five miles per hour. Um, and then speed posted on standard signs erected by the city, so we have to erect signs and get a speed limit that's not twenty-five. Um, and then except when special hazards exist, that requires a lower speed limit than set forth in this section. The foregoing speed limits are reasonable and, and prima facie speed limits apply. Um, so we, we propose to amend the existing ordinance to reduce the default residential speed limits to twenty miles per hour. Um, so reflecting more in a community-centered approach to safety. Um, the supporting data, risk at, risk of facilities. The study of the, a triple A foundation for traffic safety found that pedestrians struck a vehicle at twenty miles per hour have a ten percent risk of severe injury. Or death compared to twenty-five percent risk at twenty-five miles per hour and fifty percent risk at thirty miles per hour. Crash reductions, uh, city and Portland have reported significant decreases in traffic-related injuries and facility and fatal, fatalities. After im- implementing twenty mile per hour limits on residential streets. And livability reduces speeds, creates safer environments for walking, cycling, outdoor activities, contributing to our safety, um, and quality of life for neighborhoods. Um, so, um, on the signage of implementation. We would have to put up some signs at the entry into Manitou Springs that. And that let everyone know that on, unless other size, otherwise posted, the speed limit will be twenty miles per hour, uh, in the city. Um, we would do a community outreach, letting people know of the rules. Um, and then, and, uh, police would enforce, but with some education to go along with that, so people understand the, the new speed limit. Um, when I have the memo and I can send this out, it's not quite done yet because we have some changes when we were gonna do this and working with the police department. Um, I can also send out the memo so you can see, uh, specifics since we have a little more time now till April until I present the council. Um, at the end of the day, the pros are enhances pedestrian cyclist safety by reducing crash severity. Encourages a more livable and walkable neighborhood environment. Aligns with regional and national Vision Zero initiatives and aimed at reducing traffic-related fatalities. May reduce noise pollution and create a calmer traffic flow, supports long-term community planning goals for safer streets. Um, the cons, uh, requires financial investment of new signage and potential enforcement measures. Maybe, may be met with resistance from drivers accustomed to higher speed limits. Could lead to enforcement challenges and community concerns regarding traffic citations and potential minor delays for vehicle travel times. Um, the only other side that Cory mentioned was that, um, you know. Do we wanna consider fifteen miles per hour versus twenty, but the standard, uh, uh, Vision Zero is more at the twenty mile per hour zone. It'd be a five, a mile per hour reduction at this point. It, we could always consider reducing in the future if we decide to. Um, and then when it comes to the non-residential streets, I know we don't have a lot of those, but. I guess technically you could look at maybe Serpentine as a non-residential street area. Um, right now that could be posted at thirty-five, so, uh, but it's not. But, uh, so it may not be a big deal, but we could also consider just low on that, lowering that by five just to stay consistent. Um, so that's, that's basically what I'm recommending at this point. And the police chief agrees that twenty miles per hour would be a good way to start. Um, and so I guess I want any input and if the board would be willing to support that.
Carl.
So first of all, uh, thanks for bringing this to the board. I think this is a great suggestion. Um, and for many reasons, like you alluded to, uh, you know, the safety, I think, is really, really important. Traditionally, I think a lot of people, traffic engineers especially, right, come with that level of service mindset over safety. And we need to flip that, right? It needs to be safety first and then level of surface service. Um, and I also wanna point out that, that there's a, actually worldwide twenty is plenty campaign, so it's not just national.
That's right.
So even, you can go broader in your scope. Um, but one thing, I think the opportunity here, um, if we went with twenty as the citywide speed limit. Is we could also, as a si- side benefit, reduce the number of signs, right? A lot of people complain about having too many signs. And so if we just had at the boundaries of the city, hey, it's twenty miles an hour and, you know, we wouldn't have to have as many, you know, because it's always, oh, you didn't have the speed limit sign at that little section of the road where I was going. That would be as big a concern. And then as well, there's also, I think there's speed limit sign confusion. I know the city last year deployed the new, uh, twenty mile an hour, the, the yellow signs, you know.
Warning, warning signs.
Warning signs and a lot of people, I believe, view those as warning only, not, uh, illegally enforceable limit. And so again, this would just simplify all that, kind of the sign, the sign pollution. But the, the overall arching benefit is the safety and so I support this wholeheartedly.
Thanks for that input.
Ralph. Can't hear you, Ralph. Think you're muted.
Solid, you got me sold. Sounds like a great idea. Um, but the speed, speed limit still can be thirty. It's just when it's not. Posted, then it's twenty, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so we have to post, anything is over twenty or under twenty, we would post signs in those areas. Like it is now. Some of those would not necessarily change unless the neighborhood or there's a reason behind that where, um, where we'd have to do a traffic engineering study.
Right. Sounds like a great idea to me. I support it.
And it was really a very, really good research. I would support it also. I think to slow down traffic would be a benefit to all of us. Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Yeah, I al- I also support completely.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Cam.
Oh, um, yes, I, uh, live on Becker's Lane and I have to tell you that speeding is a huge problem. So anything we can do to lower speed limit, I'm all for.
Thank you.
Natalie, yes, please.
Um, I just, I just have a potential request. Um, I just think it'd be interesting to track how long it takes you to drive archway to archway going twenty and archway to archway going. Thirty, so you can tell people like yours, it's gonna be forty-five seconds or whatever it is.
Probably ten seconds.
Right, whatever that is. So just so that I think people.
Yes.
Have a feeling about how much time they're gonna waste. And it's probably not accurate.
And that's, that's a good question and it would be interesting to know that, I will say, um, you know, I'm not sure, right, right now it's thirty miles per hour from, uh. Uh, maybe the Chamber East. I'm not sure that would change unless, because that's also through C dot. Um, but so neighborhoods are, are more, you know, you look at Pilot Knob, for example, to go twenty-five miles per hour, I mean, even twenty might be a little tough. But, but, but twenty-five is definitely fast in some of these neighborhoods, so that's the biggest, uh, change. Um, if we were gonna propose further down Manitou Avenue, that would also, we have to go through C dot anyway. But it's still interesting to know. It doesn't.
Yeah, I just was, I just always.
Looks like Bill Kerner joined us. Are you there, Bill? I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, well, I, I support, uh, the twenty mile an hour speed limit. And I'd also, uh, ask the board to consider, uh, lowering the speed limit as we pass, uh, City Hall. And, uh, the fire department. I, I just make a practice of slowing down to twenty when I'm going through that area, when I'm on Manitou Avenue. And I haven't seen any real problems, but, uh, I think it would be a good idea just to slow speed down. Because that's where, uh, a lot of people are crossing the street right there on El Paso. Uh, crossing over to Manitou Avenue, over Manitou Avenue. And it's just, it just makes sense to me to slow everything down and plus that's a precursor for the downtown Manitou Avenue being twenty as well.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
So I haven't, I haven't heard any opposition to, um, to making a recommendation to lower the limit. Um, I'm not sure, Luke, if you had another comment, but just, just sort of for, to throw it out there. Um, do we wanna consider a recommendation to lower it further? Is twenty the right number? Um, you know, what's on our, uh, agenda is a consideration of fifteen or twenty mile an hour at the maximum. Um, any, any thoughts from the group about that?
Twenty is good. It's the standard. All cities do it. We'll stick with twenty. That's my recommendation.
Hmm, I agree with Ralph.
And I agree also.
Hey, Luke, did you have another comment?
Yeah, um, Roy had mentioned that some of the costs and maybe some of the cons even of doing this is public education, cost of signage, things like that. Uh, my recommendation is that when we do that, uh, we up the ante with some of our signage to make them digital. And even speed check type signs, so it's not the fancy new ones that issue tickets. But it is one that just flashes saying, hey, you're hauling ass. You need to slow down and it, it tells you the size of your ass. Right? It says you're going forty-five and you need to go twenty, right? It, it tells you, it gives, it's a speedometer. And so my recommendation, um, that as we, we increase our, our signage and, and reduce some of the duplicate ones. Just to make them a little bit fancier, um, and to give those speedometer signs a chance. Are, are you guys familiar with the ones I'm, I'm talking about? Um, that, that would be my recommendation.
So, yeah, so the only comment to that is that, uh, I know in the past council was anti-flashing lights. And, um, so that would have to get through council if they, you know, I don't know if there, anything's changed from a couple of years ago, but that would be just one of the challenges, I think.
Sure, uh, for, for what it's worth, um, yeah, okay, understood, thank you.
Doesn't mean we shouldn't go to them, but it may be shut down because of the flashing light thing, so.
Okay, well, I think at this time I would be glad to entertain a motion to express this board's support for a reduction of the citywide speed limit to twenty miles an hour. As proposed.
Cory, I would move that we, uh, issue a memorandum in support of a citywide speed li- speed limit of twenty miles per hour.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All right, I'll take it. I second the notion, the motion.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, I think we oughta consider, um, congestion as a, as a limiting factor here. And, uh, when you head east and go by the gas station. Um, boy, that, that traffic light there at Crystal Park Road really hangs up and traffic gets really backed up. So I would urge, uh, us to consider leaving Manitou Avenue in stretches at thirty.
Bring that stretch to thirty?
Okay, and I think, I think the, um, the proposal as, as it's written would still allow for that to be done at the discretion of staff. Um, this proposal would be to adopt a twenty mile an hour speed limit, uh, where it's not posted differently.
Correct.
Okay. That works.
And it is, just so we're all know, because I know, you know, the traffic speed's changed a little bit, but the, from, from the, um, Mac. East, it's thirty miles per hour and then from, from the Mac West, it's twenty miles per hour. Did I get that right?
The chase bank is, would be a better.
But it's, but it's further down, actually. It's closer to the.
So the twenty stuck at the chase and it, it switches from twenty to thirty at the chase.
Yes, sir, you're right, thanks.
Small little difference.
Yes, no, it's right there at the chase bank at, at Old Man's Trail area. Yeah, okay, thank you, Carl. You're right. So, so that's already there. Um, so downtown area from the chase bank in is twenty. Um, and then from the chase bank east is thirty and that will stay the same at this point, because that would be a C dot discussion. And I, I don't believe they'll change it at this point, so it wouldn't matter. But, um, but only then in residential neighborhoods that are not posted would be al- always twenty miles per hour.
Actually, I guess I need to ask this. You're saying it's only in residential neighborhoods? Do we have a definition of residential versus?
Well, just anywhere it's not posted, so it doesn't matter. Residential doesn't matter. It's just where it's not posted. It could be posted fifteen some other places or it could be posted forty-five, just default twenty.
Yeah, the, the documentation I'm looking here, and I'm not sure if this got sent out to everyone. It, it didn't appear in the packet. But it says that the current speed is residential districts not posted twenty-five, non-residential districts not, not posted thirty-five.
But that's the current model traffic code, so.
Okay, and we're proposing to change only the residential districts, not the non-residential districts?
I, I, I think, uh, to be consistent is if we just did twenty for residential and then thirty, and we just go five down also for non, would probably be okay. But, um, I'm, I'm, doesn't matter to me on the non-residential one, because I don't know if we have. um, I'm, I'm, doesn't matter to me on the non-residential one because I don't know if we have any of those in Manitou.
Yeah, I'm not sure where residential and non-residential districts are.
Yeah, so, so I, I don't know if it really matters. If we wanted to be consistent with the wording where we went five on each, it would be okay, but I'm, I'm not concerned about as much as the residential side of it, which is probably most of the roads in Manitou Springs is residential rated.
Sorry, was there a comment online? Okay, uh, so we've got a motion and a second. It sounds like we're going to modify it just a little bit, which is that the proposal is we want a reduction to 20 in residential and a reduction to 30 in non-residential.
Yeah, again, I'm not, I don't, it doesn't matter too much, I don't think, on the non-residential because I just don't know.
You know, I would say it's my, my inclination is we just say 20 miles an hour everywhere unless posted differently.
That's my thought. That way we can easily say citywide speed limit.
And that's probably fairly easy to do, so it's not a big deal. Does, yeah, I, I'm totally okay with that. I think it ma, makes sense to just make it across the board. Unless we post it and.
Unless we post it and then that's.
Exactly.
Okay, so to, to be clear, the motion we're going to vote on is, uh, 20 mile an hour speed limit everywhere in Manitou unless otherwise posted. And it's our, uh, recommendation that, that we would move forward with that. All in favor of that, please indicate by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Is there any opposed? So that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, last item we've got here is board correspondence. This is your chance to bring up things not on the agenda. It's like public comment, but for board members. Um, anybody have anything they want to bring up?
Uh, yeah, so, um, just a kind of a quick question and, and overview of Rainbow Falls. Um, I know that it was at the planning commission, I think, recently that they just got their parking lot approved at Higginbotham Plats. Uh, so that's nice. Um, my question is if we're anticipating any changes this year for some, uh, Seven Falls, um, Rainbow Falls, and if so, what those changes would be? And if there are any recommendations moving forward with maybe not even this year, but years, years coming down the line is how we want to handle, uh, Creek Walk Zone Six, especially with Rainbow Falls, um, becoming online.
Yeah, so, um, uh, El Paso County has not reached out to me yet on any differences with the, uh, schedules or anything at Rainbow Falls. So my assumption at this time is they're, they're not going to change anything because the, uh, the uh, commissioner out there has reached out last year about opening it and then we, you know, talked about how that best works and worked with them. So, so they know if there's changes to let me know. Um, I may just, since you brought it up, I may just actually touch base with them and confirm that. Um, to make sure there's no, uh, different in scheduling. And then going forward is something we'll definitely have to consider. And part of that Creek Walk Trail is how do we get them safely to Rainbow Falls if people are coming in? And that's part of that whole plan with C dot. So that will be part of that discussion when we get closer to that project. And, and then of course, the, uh, want more input from the board on, on that as well when we get there.
Sure. Uh, I don't know the exact dates, but I heard that it was going to try to open up a little earlier than it did last year. Uh, so that's good.
Yep, thank you for bringing that up.
Ralph, I see your hand up.
Two quick things. I should have done that, uh, i, in the city update here. So when do you think you're going to move out of the pool? When is that going to happen?
Well, that's a great question, Ralph. Um, I think, uh, well, we can move out of the pool once we build the parking office.
Okay, I figured that. So I, I know it's up in the air. Okay.
So, yeah, so, uh, if all goes well before the end of the year.
Understood. Other thing, real quick, Soda Springs Park. I noticed it's all tore up again. What's happening?
They are, uh, they are, um, uh, putting in the new playground, so it's all for the playground area. Um, and it didn't, it didn't, as far as I know, it didn't mess with the rock area, but, uh, maybe there's something, I don't know, but, uh, basically they're doing the playground and then of course, uh, I think later this year or next year, they're going to be looking at that, uh, stage area, I guess is the final phase, so.
Okay. Thanks. Only time I get to talk to you guys. Thank you.
You bet.
Luke, did you have something else?
Yeah, uh, thanks for bringing up Soda Springs Park. So a recent council item was to talk about Little London Winds at Soda Springs Park and designating parking spaces for Little London Winds. I mean, it was a pretty big conversation. Um, what my comment is on that entire deal is, uh, here we are, a meeting in between conversation and decision-making for the Mobility and Parking Board, and it's not even on our topic of conversation. Good thing I remembered it, right? So ultimately what I want to do is as a board, and this will, you've already alluded to having better uh, rapport with how feedback loop works. But that's a conversation that we could at least have input in. I mean, where do the Little London Winds park? You know, is it in the park itself? Are we reserving the spots along the park? Uh, you know, I have my own comments as I'm sure the board has their own comments. As I'm sure city council has their own comments, right? But for the Mobility and Parking Board to not be included in a decision when our meeting is in the midst of between decision and vote, uh, I just think that it's a missed opportunity. Um, and I hope it all works out well that Little London Winds can continue to play at the park forever. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to just share one little update that there are, uh, a few of us, I think, that are going up to Denver for the, uh, lobbying day at the Capitol to talk about safe streets. Uh, some, um, mobility advocates are going up, uh, for that and uh, probably will plan to bring back just some observations from that visit, talking about safety on our streets. I think with that, we're at the end and, uh, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thanks and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty.